Seven P M. Record that all members of the planning commission are here in attendance. Let's move to article two, the pledge of allegiance. Moving on to article three, I'll hear a motion to approve the current agenda.
So moved.
Moved by member Ringo, supported by. Member Corsonage, thank you. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none, moved to article four. Article four, does anybody wish to disclose a conflict of interest? Seeing none and hearing none will move on to article five and approve the minutes to the March sixth, twenty twenty three meeting. Do I hear a motion?
Yes, I see a couple of possible errors. Article five, I believe that my name and Mr. Richardson are transposed for the comments.
Does member Richardson agree with that?
That's correct, yeah.
Okay, we'll make that amendment and member Moxley.
Yeah, article seven. The second page of the minutes. I misspelled my name, M O X E L Y, it's L E Y.
Well, we will make the amendment, L E Y. You have that, Brian?
Mm hmm.
Cool. Member, I remember Corson.
Article ten. I don't think it was Ralph that brought up the potential of changing roundhill. Subcommittee name.
It was not noted there and should have been.
No, it was in there, but. I think I brought it up two meetings ago, but at this meeting, I actually think you had brought it up again. To be honest.
Okay.
But I.
I'm fine with them.
Yeah, Ralph and I had talked, it wasn't him, so.
Yeah.
It's either me or you. I think the meeting.
Why don't we?
Brought it up and then you had brought it up in our own business this time because we didn't have any answer yet. So I do think that was you, but that was.
Why don't we amend it to say that member Corsonage and member Nord, I jointly brought it up.
Yeah.
All right. Member Angle.
Two quick things. Article seven halfway down the. Page, the applicant, Robert, there is no last name. I don't know whether. That was the. Architect that made that or whether it was the property owner, that property owner did make a comment to that effect. But his name was Tom. Aberg, I believe. So I don't know who Robert, I know, do we have a last name?
We don't always, if you didn't sign in, so we can double check, but we might only have the first name.
Okay.
Check that.
Would you like it just modified to the applicant, because they were representing the applicant?
I'm assuming it's somebody representing the applicant, but I don't. I don't know that both.
It wasn't during the public hearings, so.
It would have to be.
Either it would have been the property owner or the.
So why don't we just?
So we can.
The property owner would be Thomas, would be Tom Aberg, but the applicant fifteen fifty is not the address where the work was done, I don't believe, so.
I think he, that was the applicant who's the architect giving his address. He signed as the applicants.
Okay, so speaking on behalf of.
Okay, yeah, speaking on behalf of the property.
And then on page, I guess it would be article nine, second to last line. Legal counsel is, should be C O U N S E L. Not counsel, C O U N C I L.
Think we might need.
Okay.
That's it.
Remember, but now. Just two more. I believe that both of them were kind of minor, but. Article nine, next last paragraph, it says, her understanding is that legal counsel stated they could pull a code of conduct from the zoning ordinance. I think it's back to the, we've kind of loose on the terminology. I think she meant pull the bylaws from the zoning ordinance. Because I don't think the code of conduct is in the zoning ordinance. And then just to protect my fellow member, Mr. Rowland here. There's no mention that he brought up the fact that he might have a conflict of interest. Obviously, it was. Bypassed, but probably should be noted, so he's not ever in a pinch himself.
Okay, we can amend the amendments to reflect that member Rowland has a membership at Watermark.
You guys got to get that on the.
Just so. Just so the record is clear for the rest of the board. I don't think it was bypassed. It was considered and it was determined that it wasn't a conflict.
Okay, thank you.
Just to be fair.
Yep, much, much.
Member Rowland's extensive membership was not. Considered a conflict. Okay.
Our tab by David.
Hey, anybody else? I think that's the most amendments that we've made to ten minutes, so.
And I apologize for not doing the usually thorough job.
No, no, that was.
Gets here.
This is good.
It's good.
Let it go this time. All right, with that, do I have a motion to approve it with the amendments listed?
So move.
So move by member, member Moxley, supported by.
Sport.
Member, member Bernard, I heard him first. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, hearing none. We will move on and acknowledge any visitors or those wishing to speak. I suspect you're here for a case, so. We have anybody out on Zoom? Is there anybody even, we do? Anybody that wants to speak? If you are on Zoom. Please raise your hand and. If you'd like to speak.
You just go like this.
Yeah. Okay. Hearing none, let's move to article seven, case number twenty two dash three, seven, zero, one slash Woods Builders Homes, Inc. Believe we've seen this before.
We haven't. You should rule over again.
All right, so here the applicant has applied to amend an existing P U D to allow for a twenty four unit apartment project at sixty one oh five Charleboy Woods Court. Which is immediately to the northeast of Walmart and is requesting a basic plan review at this time. So as Chris mentioned, this might look familiar to some of you, and that's because we reviewed this plan once back on April eighteen of twenty twenty two. At that time, it was noted there were some questions regarding deeded access to this parcel through the Walmart's. Property that the attorney for the seller and the buyer and applicant were working through. And so the applicant's come back now at this time, has been waiting for some progress. They've indicated that they want to begin moving forward once again. And so I decided to bring this back for another basic plan review since so much time had elapsed from that initial review, and we also have a couple of new members on the planning commission as well. So there have not been any changes made to the basic plan, but I'll provide a brief recap of the application and what's being proposed. So there'll be twenty four apartment units located in three buildings on the four acre parcel at sixty one oh five. So this parcel falls under the community residential designation of the master plan, which says allow for up to six dwelling units per acre, which would then be twenty four units. This is a similar density to the existing residential development immediately to the west of this property. The development will also include a new private street that has two connections out to Charleboy Woods Court. The P U D that it'll be located in was created in nineteen ninety eight to permit an adult assisted living facility campus. There is an adult living facility located in the parcel immediately to the east, but this parcel has remained vacant. So a change for use from an assisted living facility to attached residential would require an amendment to the P U D ordinance. So just as a reminder, a P U D amendment requires three meetings before the planning commission. We're having the basic plan review tonight, which is essentially an introduction to the plan and an opportunity for the planning commission to request additional information from the applicant. Before the next step, which is then the preliminary development plan. At that review, we hold a public hearing and also a more formal site plan review of the project. And then after that, I would actually draft the amendment language, the P U D ordinance, which would be brought back to the planning commission for a final recommendation to the township board. So at this time, I'm recommending that the nine items that were required to be submitted from the original basic plan review are still be required along with an additional item, which is a traffic impact analysis. And just kind of a little bit of background on that. So immediately west of the property, there's a sharp curve in Charleboy Woods Court. You can see it here on the plan where it dips down and then back up. Right there. So this was created when Walmart constructed an addition in two twenty twelve, which moved the drive northward. At that time, there were conditions put on the cross easement that required the drive to be straightened before the properties to the east could be developed. The property owners argue that this creates a hardship for them, so they should be able to leave the drive as is with that curve in it. So if that drive is not straightened out, I believe that would be appropriate to require traffic impact analysis that determines how much additional traffic. Will be generated by the new development, and if it creates a safety issue with that sharp curve in Charleboy Woods Court. So with that addition, I'd recommend that the ten items listed in the staff report be submitted before the application proceeds to a preliminary development review. And then now would be the time for any additional requests of the applicant.
Did we get? Information on the deeded issues that were brought up before?
Yep, so the attorney for the seller, the current property owner, sent me a number of documents there to review. And then their next step is to work with Walmart, because it sounds like there's again a question of this, because the easement runs straight. It doesn't include the area that dips down. So the easement would need to be expanded to include where the road actually is located now. So that's the largest issue, and then it was maybe cleaning up a couple of other things.
Yeah, I thought there was something with the neighbor next door, Marshman's old stuff, but the assisted living was.
Not an easement with that. I don't think it was more about access, or actually for all of these properties.
Yeah.
Across the Walmart property.
Alright, understood.
Wasn't there something about? Um. Fire trucks turning around or something or?
Pulled up the minutes from that meeting.
Yeah.
What the issues were, and there was questions from me and. Deidra about space for emergency vehicles to get into the buildings. And that that would be something that would come up when your response was, that would become something the fire department would address when it would came to their approval.
Okay.
So it'd be part of the next phase, they'd be reviewing.
Okay. Member Angle had a question first.
The member Rissy. It would just seem to me that the applicant wouldn't move. Forward with this until they were assured legally that that easement was, issue was cleaned up. I mean, that. So Walmart says no.
Yeah, there's been some progress made, so that's why I think it got. Kind of brought back up to reintroduce it here to the planning commission, because they're moving towards that.
The applicants here too, right?
Yep, yeah, they'd be able to speak to that maybe as well.
Second question, maybe this was your last time, I didn't look, but number ten on page two. Discussion about setbacks. It says it appears that the building is located within the front yard setback. What does that mean? Am I missing something here?
So they would just, as the next phase, they would have to move that out of the setback. So right when I looked at just this very basic plan, it looks like it's. It was a few feet within the required setback, so that's just a note. As they move with their revisions to the plan, they'd have to move that building a few feet.
And you would require them to do that.
Yep.
We can make that a requirement of our.
I didn't see that in the recommendation this way.
I would just include that, because again, they haven't really. Submitted a formal site plan, so when they do that, I'll do my typical zoning review, and that'd be one of my comments for them. I was just kind of preaddressing it here essentially.
As a reminder, this is our opportunity to give the applicant guidance, the opportunity for them to ask questions. This is not. Super formal or approval yet, member Rissy.
Brian, I, in the packet, which. Well, in the packet, it makes reference to the private road. Ordinance and nineteen units is the cap. What is the? So by adding the second entrance, then that private road can have more than. So many units, correct?
Yeah, if this was a cul-de-sac, they could only have nineteen units. That's why it has that second entrance.
Right, just. But my question is, the road that that is connected to is indeed a private road also.
It is, yeah.
And that only has. The one entrance.
That has an emergency access easement off the south of the cul-de-sac that I found, so it has.
I think that is the point that somebody brought up a minute ago about we were looking for an easement in the past that showed. Something in writing that that existed, and I think that was the sticky point. I could be wrong on this, but I thought the concern was that they didn't. They didn't. I guess that's my question, is are we sure that there is something in writing that shows that they have access from two points on that road as well?
That's what it was. That's why I brought up Marsman, because it was.
Yes.
Yeah. His old property.
Yeah, so we can confirm that I'm. You know, when that originally went, it was an easement essentially to the township, so we would have to, I believe, revoke that, but we can. Get that document and confirmation from them, because that is in place off the, should be in place off the south side of the cul-de-sac, giving that second. Essentially, emergency vehicle access.
So you're talking about having an access both from the west and from the east then?
The south.
Or the, I guess.
Or east of this parcel, but south off that.
Yeah. Didn't see that today.
From the east end of the road.
Right.
Going to the south.
Again, that's just an emergency vehicle access, not an actual. Private drive.
You can get there today. As I remember, I mean.
Well, you're cutting through the car dealership's parking lot to do it, but.
You can.
But. Right, I understand, but the point is the ordinance says that if you're going to have more than nineteen units, you need to have another point of entry. And I certainly don't want to create a. Uh. Call me out with a word here of a pattern.
Precedent.
Well precedent, thank you, member all in a precedent of allowing. Twenty four units plus the other. Well, originally it was Thorn Apple Man or whatever it's called now. Building on a, on a, on a private street that only has one. Point of entry, because that's way more than nineteen units. I mean, we've had a lot of people come in front of us before wanting to build. Houses on private drives, and we've told them, no, because you know, you can't build those last three houses because you have. You know, because you only have nineteen units. Because that's all the road will do. So I just want to make sure that we do indeed have something in writing that we can hold up and say to. Applicant B who walks in the door and says, hey, you let this guy build twenty four units and you would only let me have nineteen.
Yeah.
So we can add that as an eleventh item, then, yeah.
I think we should. Not to, I'm not trying to make it a challenge, I just want to make sure that we're being thorough.
I'd be upset if I was denied. Member Nordhuck has a question.
I'm kind of looking at it the other way. We've got another twenty four units. I keep seeing people walking across that Walmart parking lot and up that little narrow street. We've put in millions of dollars with the pathways. I don't know why we don't have a. Sidewalk from that area up to our pathway. Why that couldn't be included in this?
Yeah, you have another one.
Yeah. Interestingly, there's no sidewalks within the community itself either.
That's something we mentioned the last staff report, the thought was there aren't, there's nothing for it to connect to from this property. So that was. Again, it's something I asked for the group to consider if they're, want to add sidewalks there. Typically, because in a new development, we'd have sidewalks, but they typically connect to either existing pathway or some other sidewalk system.
Yeah, member Bruno.
I have just a general question. Charleboy Woods Court, so I, I think I understand the, the east termination, at least on the private drive. It's the, it's assisted living. And then there's this debatable. Exit to the south through the Subaru dealership, which I drove just literally before I came here. And it was cumbersome, I guess I would say. But ironically, that's where I started, and it was cumbersomely nice, because it's a new road. But then I went. West on Charleboy Court. Charlie Woods Court. And I wasn't sure I stayed on it, but I think I did. So am I correct that Charleboy Woods Court passes by the Walmart, passes by the development behind the Walmart? Passes behind the other Fox dealership.
I think at that point, it becomes a separate, it is one continuous road.
It doesn't.
We'd have to check the easement documents, if that's all technically Charleboy Woods, that might just be a separate. Private drive extending after that.
I always thought it was Meyer Drive. And then does it?
It's a learn.
Up with Meyer.
It does. I don't know if that one.
So we're thinking it starts there, or does it go out to, I'm trying to, does it go out to Craft, or does it turn by Sundance and connect to twenty eighth?
It turns at Sundance and it turns before Sundance and goes to twenty, like right here. You can see it right here.
See?
So it turns.
They're all for that desk goal.
Yeah, Charlotte. But it's not like I'm on Google map.
Yeah, no, it's.
And it's, yeah, so. Maps is wrong then, because Charleboy Woods Court technically goes up to the intersection of twenty eighth street and. Then was this in? Charlie Drive across.
Say it.
And then, and then the road that you're.
I thought you said Savoy.
I'm sorry.
Or, or.
Yeah.
So.
Say.
S A V O.
Sorry.
Okay.
So yeah, follows then north, south, down from that new development down to twenty eighth street.
Yeah, so that. It probably stops right there. In theory. So how does the road agreement work with Charleboy Woods?
That's one of the documents we requested from, just to confirm that there's a maintenance agreement. And that's a little bit of the question, is it just for this cul-de-sac portion, or how would they re, would they have to rewrite it for the portion that goes across the Walmart drive? If they're sharing maintenance costs, or if it's just an access. Uh, easement.
Member Bruno and then member.
When you say when it goes across the Walmart drive, are you talking about the part of Charleboy Court that goes north, south? Are you talking about the part that goes?
Both, both of those.
Okay, so, so really the whole use of that road.
Hmm. Yeah, or west, yep, this, everything besides the portion that goes east, extends east past the Walmart one.
So I do have a few general questions about these so-called streets through here, and I think. The fact that Google Maps is even confused by the names of these illustrates part of the problem. So if Charleboy Woods Court southeast goes from. Uh. The assisted living facility. All the way out to Craft near Big B Goodwill, O'Neill's.
We're saying it stops before then, it stops.
Okay, so it stops. At Walmart, or it stops at Savoy, is it called Savoy Savory?
That new, where that new housing development is north of Walmart, there's the access there that comes out and then it goes north, south.
Yeah, so that's a street. So we're saying that Wal, the Walmart property is ringed by a public street, essentially.
Private street.
So.
Public.
So if Walmart. Just packed up and demolished the building, that street would remain?
That's the idea, is you have the access easement, so.
And then that, is it typical to have a street with? Six, seven, eight, nine, ten parking lot entrances, like. Dotted next to it. It doesn't feel like a street. I just drove through there. Yesterday, and I mean, it feels like. A few connected alleyways at the edges of several parking lots, um. I don't know, I guess I don't have a question.
Didn't he publicly maintain it all, or is that all?
I don't believe so. It's all right.
That was another question that came up before was the road agreement. We wanted to see the road agreement to see who was maintaining all of that.
Yep.
That was one other thing.
I thought it was, I think it's more savory street that has the, to me, that has that feel that he's speaking of. I think Charleboy Woods Court, there's at least signage on it that shows that it's Charleboy Woods Court, and it has a little bit more of a. A little bit more of a.
You get to where.
That turns and heads south and goes back up the twenty eighth street is what he's talking about. You've got all those cutaways into the main.
Right into the Walmart parking lot. Yeah.
Like, if it was an actual. Legitimate street, it would have maybe like one entrance off of it into the Walmart parking lot, not just.
Quite.
A porous. Edge to the Walmart parking lot.
I think the problem is, I think a big part of the problem isn't that identifying it as a street is that. And this is what, again, brings up the point of the maintenance agreement, is there are no lines painted on it. So even when you get to the intersection, there's two left-hand turn lanes off twenty eighth street that turn onto Charleboy Woods Court, but. People are waiting to turn left. Frequently. In the oncoming traffic lane, because there's nothing.
I agree.
Designating.
So it's already a dangerous road, essentially.
Well, I mean, yeah, I guess you could say that. That's not the point I was trying to make, but yeah.
Well, then it narrows right before you get to the. Eastern fork. And I think it's actually narrower than the hidden, the drive I live on. And it's not even to code, like, it seems really narrow there at the last. So if you're on Charleboy Woods Court private heading north off twenty eighth. When you make a right turn to go east on Charleboy Woods.
Okay, so you're talking right in front of the current apartments that are there?
Yes.
Yeah, I measure that as being twenty nine feet wide.
Right, well, and I.
Which is wider than what our ordinance allows for.
Fire department's gonna have an issue with the other.
Here.
Yeah.
Here. This one's down.
Right.
Getting a fire truck.
That'd be one of the biggest things, we'd ask them if they have concerns or.
Twenty eight feet.
I can't believe.
And I think our.
Might be perception.
Yeah, I think our ordinance says has to be twenty feet, so.
Just eighteen feet for a private street.
That's right, I, I was pushing for us to change that ordinance, I got.
This may be an opportunity for, sorry, member Corsonage.
I just have a random, how many apartments are in the redwood?
I should know that off the top of my head, but I believe it's seventy. Something I can, I can confirm that for you.
I was just wondering, it just seems like a lot with that and everything else, but.
One more quick, oh, sorry.
That's one of mine was a comment, go ahead.
One more quick. Comment, I guess, about this so-called street again. So between. What's on Google Maps labeled as Charleboy Woods Court, which goes north, south through the Walmart parking lot. And. Savoy, or it looks like Savory. That's, that's part of the street there behind Baton Imports.
That's a separate. Private drive essentially. So Charleboy goes north, south, and then east. It doesn't extend west anymore than that north, south portion.
Okay, so this, so behind Baton Imports is not a street that we're admitting is just some sort of alleyway?
It's, I'd have to see exactly what the easement says in it.
Okay, because it's extremely narrow, and then the fence goes right up to the edge of the road. I mean, it's not, it doesn't feel like you could put something across the street. If it's a fence.
But that street's not related to this.
Okay, that's what I was just trying to figure out. Like, I thought that was Charleboy Woods mistakenly.
I, I believe there's eighty nine units in that apartment complex.
Yeah, any other questions? Ryan, so are you coming?
Yeah, member Bruno. I have a couple. So again, I'm gonna, I'm gonna play the newbie hat a little bit, but if I understand this P U D, it was rigid in ninety eight, modified in two thousand two, modified in two thousand four. Hmm. I admittedly haven't seen the final version. But. Reading through what was redacted and what was removed, it still appears that there are some terminology, like. The existing tree line along the northern property line shall not be disturbed. I think that still remains if I've done my Boolean operations correctly. But that doesn't seem to hold true on the plan. So is that something that's going to be? Modified as part of the amendment as well? There are other parts, all buildings in the project show a brick exterior. I think that still remains in the. In the P U D as I read it.
Right, and all of that can be amended or not, if we want to keep items like that, or if we want to remove them.
Okay, so, so, okay, I was just trying to understand if that was anticipated to still be in there. And then I think I had one more. And this may be changes over time. There's a mention in here of a. Again, in the P U D, it says for any future developments, it must have a soil erosion control plan. That wasn't one of your nine items, is that now superseded by a different name?
That's always just required by the counties, that's probably a little antiquated language.
Okay.
That's when, yeah, so it's all required as part of the county before any building permits are given.
So the county has to step in and do that. Before Cascade will issue the permit?
Yeah, as part for any, you know, large commercial building, credit always requires a soil erosion permit, and those go through Kent County Road Commission.
Ryan, do you know why when they? Added on to Walmart, they were allowed to have that weird hook there in that back corner for that road? Is that because the road originally came through straight and they just bumped it out, but they didn't make them realign it, or?
Yeah, well, exactly, it was, so it was straight and the addition bumped it north, and it's not exactly clear why. Walmart didn't have to straighten it at that time, that's. Some of the property owner's argument is of, you know, why do we have to straighten that now?
Oh, I, I agree with the argument, I'm just trying to understand.
I don't, yeah, I don't know if the thought was there's. They're waiting for more development, and then it's more of an issue, so it gets straightened out, because I don't know exactly why it wasn't straightened.
And if you realign with that, if you realign, you're gonna chop off a huge chunk of that core of property too.
You are, but you could, in theory, if they had, what they should have done, has gotten another easement on the east side of Walmart to be able to use the other egress twenty eighth street. And then, and then that would have given them two points of access.
And it would have been.
And eliminated the private drive concern.
Yeah. That's what.
From nineteen units.
Maps, it's like the thing that makes the most sense.
Right. With the access here.
Still, well, but if the, if the drive on the east side of Walmart continued straight through into their parcel, you see what I'm saying? So you made that into a four-way stop instead of a. Right. Then you, then you have. You have two drives essentially going in and out. I mean, you could, you could, you could put up that argument, and I think it would hold more water than the. Than, you know, where you're at today.
I'm guessing there's a little concern since that's loading for Walmart of trucks going in and out of there of having that be in access, but. Well, I don't know that for sure.
I'm sure. Turning on to twenty eighth street at the end, because if it's an access road, people are gonna use it, and they want everybody to go to the light.
Right.
Well, Walmart likes to.
I had three more, sorry. Again, just, just making sure I understand. So the, the P U D also, I believe, would remain, that says, the project should not exceed a height of twenty five feet. I did this on my laptop, I'm sorry, so I couldn't print. This and use the scale that was on the drawing, but. My perception is that something on here might be taller than twenty five feet.
So that's just for assisted living, so that wouldn't necessarily apply to residential, so that could be changed, because, for example, our typical residential single-family home can be up to thirty five feet tall.
Okay.
And we measure to the midpoint of the top.
Okay. And then I'm sorry, I just. I mark at the back, but some scrolling, so apologies for my slowness here. Again, looking at the original, I just, I'd like to understand the, that's some constitution, so I have to understand the intent to regularly agree to this P U D. It says the township finds the project have at least as much green, green and usable space as would be required by the township's zoning ordinance. Would that still hold true under this new?
That would, because there's less green space required for residential than commercial uses, so that would still.
Oh, and then finally, what, what, so I, it might be obvious to others, but. So the applicant says that would be a hardship to take that curve out. Can, can, can we ask for them to elaborate what the hardship would be?
Yeah, and just the financial cost of doing that, since they are being forced to pay for that instead of Walmart are being done previously, but. They can speak to that as well.
Then is it just the cost of the actual reconfiguration? Does it take away recurring revenue as in they would lose a, a, a unit?
It does also shrink their footprint, so it would go into their potential stormwater, things like that, but yeah, they could speak more to that too.
Thank you. I'm done. Sorry.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you, Brian. Would the applicant like to come forward, answer questions? They have some. You could state your name for the record and.
Name's, excuse me, my name's David Woods. So, um, thanks for considering our project here. Appreciate that. Um, in terms of the curvature of the road, there is the financial aspect of it. Um, there's also the argument that we, we feel like it's a little bit more of a, if, if it just lines up with the parking lot, it feels like it's a, it'd be a bit of a speed control cuz now you come across the back of the parking lot and you gotta kind of turn to come into this. It might slow traffic down a little bit, so we thought that that might be an advantage leaving it. And I think aesthetically, I think it's just, it's nice the way it is, but. And in terms of the easement, I guess, our worst case scenario would be, the best case scenario would be to have the easement moved to include the road as it is. The worst case scenario from our perspective, I guess, would be if we had to go within the easement. I don't think it'd be a showstopper for us on the project and we could move the road within the easement. Which would basically straighten it back out again. Not really straightening it. I would just basically move in the entrance back to the back of the parking lot.
Would, would you have to, would you have to change the site plan for the buildings then?
I, I, I'd have to talk with my engineer, but I don't think so because I didn't, I think the area that's coming closer to the, I think we, we got plenty of setback there anyways. For the, off the building, so I don't think there'd be an issue, but I want to verify that with my engineer and with Brian.
Does anybody have any questions for the applicant? Remember.
I think the last time this came up, I might have asked about this, but is there, there's no, um. I don't see a spot for a dumpster enclosure anywhere. Are they doing individual trashcans?
I skipped over that. Sorry.
Yeah, I, I thought was individual trashcan.
Okay, alright. Any other questions for the applicant?
Do you have any other developments in Cascade if we wanted to drive through and see?
Um, we don't, we're building in Ada, um, right behind McDonald's. You know, the, the development there in Ada.
Next to the post office.
Uh, yes, correct. Next to the post office, behind McDonald's, that's our development. We got one out in Hudsonville. I don't know if you golf at Glen Eagle Golf Course or not, but for, th- that's been a few different builders over the years cuz it started like twenty some years ago and, um, but we're currently building in that development right now. So those are the, those are the two developments we have going right now.
Marisi?
No, I'm gonna hold my question for Brian if we're done with him.
Okay, anybody else have any questions for the applicant? Thank you so much for coming. Okay.
Can I ask a question, Brian now?
By all means.
Brian, and, and perhaps when I was studying these plans, I, and, and you guys were talking, perhaps I overlooked this if it came up in conversation a moment ago. Apologize, but I noticed there's eleven, I think, parking spaces on here. Is that a typical amount for twenty four units?
So they might have in-unit spots as well. That's not something that I've looked at.
No, I, I understand. They have driveways. I'm just saying from a, do we have enough auxiliary parking to meet our ordinance?
I, like I said, I haven't calculated that yet, so I don't know. That's something I'd address with the zoning review and I'd have to see how many, if they, you know, if each unit has two parking spaces. Then I'm sure it is. If each unit only has one, then it might not be. So I'd calculate that as part of my zoning review.
I have a question. Yeah. And it's for Brian or the group. So it's just my, for my own education, like, I know we talked about eighteen, nineteen units. And we have to have a, what a second entry point? So, it's, and I'm looking at Redwood and they've got what eighty nine units. Where's their second entry point?
They should have two out to Charlotte Boy Woods there, don't they?
They do.
They do.
Right, but the, but the point is that Charlotte Way Woods is a.
But I think it's probably, my guess would be it's that emergency one we're talking about.
Well, in which case they have savory street going to the west. Cuz it's essentially a four-way stop, the point I made a minute ago.
So then maybe my, uh, next question for the applicant would be, are you willing to put a second entrance in there so that you can get your twenty four units? Cuz it, it, but it looks like they have to, don't they?
They do have two, that they're putting into out to.
Okay, so that's.
Yeah, remember Bruno?
I, I agree. I think I'm confused now. So I, 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 I think the problem is we have, I think we have a development on a cul-de-sac, not the development itself. So can someone explain the difference? I, so right now, the development, I forget the name, I apologize, is, is a horseshoe shape. It clearly has two entrances, but it's being built on an existing cul-de-sac. So there's only one way to the development if you treat it as, as a singular hole. That's the one I think needs a second.
That's the emergency vehicle.
That's the Subaru.
Correct, yeah.
So, so when we're talking two entrances, we're talking two entrances to the development as well as two entrances to the cul-de-sac.
Essentially both, yeah.
Essentially both, so it's two separate.
But it appears that there are two entrances to the cul-de-sac and there are two entrances to the, to the development. In my mi- I mean.
There are.
Yeah.
Okay, so.
There, there are to the development.
Okay.
Cuz it's a horseshoe shape.
Right.
There's Charlotte Boy Court coming from Walmart off twenty eighth street, right, the first entrance. The second entrance to the cul-de-sac is through the Subaru dealership.
So it's a moot point of the eight, nineteen units.
If somebody can show that they have that writing, that they can cut through the dealership.
Okay, okay, alright, alright, there, okay, I didn't understand that, okay.
So we can make that a requirement. Remember Maxley?
Uh, just a couple of comments. I did drive out there and check it out. Uh, number one, I, I am concerned about the number of what I'll call visitor parking spaces, only eleven. I just think for nineteen unit, there's twenty four units. That's not enough. And my son lives in a similar type of complex and I always have trouble finding place to park my car. Um, second thing is, uh, I tend to agree with the applicant about the, uh, using the existing curvature at the northeast corner of, uh, Walmart. Rather than trying to straighten out the drive, I, it does slow you down, uh, but that's, to me, that's a safety issue. Uh, I, I guess I, I kind of am willing to accept the way it is right, right now.
It would be nice if there was lines on the road so you can kind of.
But I think that comes in a review of that agreement probably. It's not his, he didn't make the road.
So the emergency entrance through the Subaru dealership, is that gonna be all marked as fire lane, no parking? Cuz it seems congested.
We'd require that it remain open for vehicular access.
Is it signed? There's a badge there?
I don't know if it'd be signed, but we'd make Subaru aware of, or we'd review the easement language. The easement language would hopefully speak to that.
Is, is there an existing easement right now along the side of the Subaru dealership?
That's the thought. That's what we're, the, looking to confirm them providing that document.
Should we be tabling this until we have more information?
Well, there's, there's no decision, right? There's no decision tonight. We're just asking what we want the applicant to provide before the actual.
So I would, I would say that we definitely want the applicant to provide the easement language and, uh, we want to be comfortable with that language. So I mean, I think that's some, some guidance we can give you, absolutely. It would seem to me if you, if we can't get an easement along the side of Subaru, we can't do this. But maybe it's that, maybe I'm making it too simple, but. I think the planning commission would have a difficult time approving it if we didn't have that easement.
But again, that's the, the long conversation at the end. There really is another entrance back there.
So.
You talked about it, the one behind the Volvo dealership. So granted.
Right, but that's not part of the road where he is. That's, that works for the other development, I think. Cuz they connect to both roads, but this development only connects to one private drive and the ordinance says nineteen units to a private drive. So that he's gotta get the access through another.
So we, we have access. We, we've given that to the applicant. What other, because again, this preliminary, I want to speak this up. This preliminary review, uh, member Bruno, then member Roland, then member Rissy.
Just one last one. It's a bit naive, but what do we typically require? I, looking at this, it's, it's, it's fifteen hundred square foot apartments, I think. So that screams single family to me, which I guess I am prejudiced and I see children. And I'm just surprised in the year twenty twenty three, we don't have, as a community that has great pathways, we don't require developers to have sidewalks, anything.
We, we can.
We can. Do we all feel strongly that there should be sidewalks?
I do.
Or let me rephrase that, or at least complete streets. I guess I, I, I don't wanna be old, fat, old schools has to be a discreet sidewalk, but there's now complete streets, right? That have a pedestrian lane essentially.
Yeah, I think a pedestrian, but do we all feel, again, we, we need to give him feedback, right?
Yeah, I, I think if you'd like to see sidewalks, let's, let's, let's give them that feedback.
Right, yeah.
But does anybody disagree with there being a pedestrian lane or sidewalks?
I, I don't think, I don't know if it's necessary. I mean, I, I look at the development, what's that one on Spalding that kind of, those, those like this that went up on Spalding and they're, they're really, I've got a friend that lives back there and they're really not families aren't living back there, you know, um. Divorced people, uh, you know, newly married couples. I mean, just, they're not, it's not typically families. It's, you know, it's high income earners that just aren't there yet for getting a house or don't want a house yet. Yes, probably, yeah.
There is.
There is a park over there.
So, but, but I'm, I'm not gonna fall into sort.
We must have really good planners.
If the rest of the group feels that that's important, then yeah, but, but I think what, um, Ralph brought up about the parking spots, now that I'm looking at that. Okay, yeah, I think. Find more spots.
So more parking spots and easement. So these are the things, you know, again, we're here to give you guidance on what to come back with for an approval, right? Consider some kind of sidewalk or pedestrian lane.
Are you thinking that's along the proposed private street or where are we, are we asking for that, I guess?
Remember Bruno, you started this.
I, I guess my opinion is, you know, that, they're within walking distance of Walmart. There ought to be a way to walk to the Walmart. I'd say that's, that's where the commercial district is. I don't think they're gonna be walking to assisted living. Um, so I would say a. Yeah, not really, sorry. Again, I just, I just look at how, I look at how the, how the property is gonna be used. I would say people are going to be walking and we have a pinch point here that we're saying now is a feature. It's a bump out to slow traffic down, but it's also a pinch point. So it'd be nice if we didn't throw children and people walking to Walmart into that same intersection.
That's a very fair point.
Okay, that, I'm Marisi.
Uh, I would like to see the maintenance agreement for Charlotte Waywood's Court.
Okay.
We've got that one on, on the list.
Okay, and it, it, you know, when we talk about sidewalks, I think where the problem comes in is that when we approved the other development, we probably should have had a walk come down the east side of Walmart or something and circle around and then that would have served us to both. Yeah, brought them all the way up to twenty eighth street, but that's probably where we botched up. So I'm, I'm.
Think you remember then, I believe you're.
I don't think I was when that one was approved. I think I was when they approved the one, uh, by Culvers, but I don't think I was when this one was approved. I actually did some work there once.
Twenty fourteen, that wasn't there, so. Remember Bruno?
So, so can I ask for clarification from this, Mr. Member Reese? So are you saying that since we botched that, we wouldn't fix the wrong? Are you saying that?
No, I guess what I'm saying is.
I get that.
What, what I'm saying is.
Two different.
Two different. I can't, I can't say to him, I want him to try and get an easement to go across the Walmart property up, up to twenty eighth street. But I, I certainly don't have an issue with a walk on his property.
Yes.
I just don't want to task him.
Perfect.
With trying to connect the other neighborhood and his neighborhood to twenty eighth street, which ideally would be what's best. And I'm bringing it up more or less so that staff and everybody hears this, so that if perhaps Walmart comes in in the future and wants to expand, we can say to Walmart, hey, by the way, we'd like to see a walk on the east side of the building come straight down. Or maybe on the west side, wherever they want to put it, but that's why I'm bringing it up because that's how it'll happen in the future if, if it has a chance of happening.
No, great answer. That's what I was, I was wondering what, what you meant by that. So thank you.
Yeah, member Roland's been patiently waiting.
This isn't a question for the applicant. This is probably more for, for us, but and I would not expect the applicant to bear all the costs of this, but is this, I mean, that, that road's a cluster, right? And is this, is this an opportunity for us to fix it, right? For, make it right?
Well, that's why we asked to see the agreement.
And maybe we get some estimates on what that would cost. You know, I have a feeling it's gonna.
What does that mean? Make it right? Like, like, we'd have to define that.
Well, and that's what I'm saying. Like, I mean, that, that whole, this, that, yeah. That's something we decide, right? But that whole little spot back there, I mean, it's a, you know, I, I don't know. I mean, we all agree that that's not the way it probably should be.
I don't think we can have that conversation until we see the agreement.
And that's fine. I just think we should, that should be on.
So the agreement's already on there, uh, from staff as a rec. So, um, I think that's a valid conversation to have when, when it comes forward. Does anybody else have anything else? Yes, member Maxley?
Uh, I'm a proponent for adding a sidewalk, uh, along the south property line. Uh, in alignment with the road. Uh, not only for the use of the people who live in this apartment complex, but also uh, I think the people who live in the retirement home, assisted care. A lot of those people are, are gonna wanna get out and walk around periodically. My mother-in-law, uh, who recently passed away, she, she loved getting out and walking. Not to say that, uh, the developer would have to add the sidewalk all the way into the assisted care property. But the assisted care property, people could then have an opportunity to expand that and connect to it. And that way they could walk over to Walmart. They wanted to and get some exercise in the process.
Maybe that's the consideration as it relates to the sidewalk, right? That, that gives your residents the ability to walk to the Walmart.
When you say walk to Walmart, you mean?
Along this, along the south side. Yes, yep.
Just to the edge of your property. Just to the edge of your property, really.
You probably wanna talk with them cuz if they never have any intention of connecting to it.
Yep. Brian, can we reach out to them and ask them if they have, if, if this was added as a condition that they would add on to it as well?
Yeah, we, I mean, we probably work that into our condition here and have the, athlete can do some of that as well.
Yeah, yeah, I'm sorry. Absolutely.
Good, good point.
Yep. Yes, member Rissy.
Could I just point out that his east drive entrance is only twenty four and a half feet of, from the, uh, east lot line. So we're not talking about a great, a great deal of walk.
Okay. Good, good point. Does anybody else have anything else?
But if we were going to. If somebody's gonna walk to Walmart, not gonna walk that direction, back to Walmart.
You're right. They're gonna walk to your west drive, not your east drive.
But, yeah.
And that, and that's.
Go to the one that's closest and then walk along the street.
Yeah, so let's, let's investigate that, see if they would, and if they wouldn't, and there we go. So, uh, we don't know what level of care, right? That people there may not be able to, to get out. We, we don't know. So, okay, does anybody else have anything? I, I just, I hope we've given you some things to consider. I, I think we've been clear about what we will and, and, and probably would not consider, so. Yeah, and yeah, he can reach out to us if, if there are further questions, right? But I, I think tonight was about just giving you that level of detail since we have a, quite a few new members since you were here last, so. All right, uh, I don't think we need to vote or anything. We just, we've done what we said we would do. Um, let's, uh, thank you, Mr. Woods.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Nice job on the, on his, uh, units in, uh, Ada. Those are.
Yeah.
Classy and well done.
Okay, um, i- i- if we're not clear, we are very supportive of this, so I hope that's, that's clear.
I'm sorry.
I said that we're not, if it's not clear, we are very supportive of this, so I, I wanna make sure.
Everybody's best interest.
Yeah.
Some of the comments last time were basically just the place right now for old Walmart.
Yeah, this, this is good and sometimes it, it can come off and we're, we're giving guidance like we, it's not something that we want. That's not the case. Good. Good, good. Okay, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Brian. Article eight, review of proposed amendments to master plan, I think there's gonna be some comments on this.
Yes, I'm so excited about it.
Yeah, so essentially, so the, it's Scott and Chris made their presentation to the township board who indicated that they also agreed with. Um, redesignating this area of the future land use plan back to, you know, essentially an agricultural one, so essentially what I did here was just. Trace the agricultural zone to properties in that area and then transfer those to the future land use map. So that's showing, you know, based on the direction given, those are the areas that would then be designated as the rural residential. Which is the future land use designation for agricultural, so that's what's in your packet here. And then just in terms of next step, so if planning commission agrees on this amendment to the master plan, you just have to forward this to the township board for review and comment. We then approve it for distribution to begin the public comment period.
Oh, Adam, I'm, I'm, I've sent this to um both the supervisor and a few other board members, just to make sure that, and I'll let. Uh, trustee Nordhook also speak, uh, just to confirm, this is what they told us, and uh. Everybody uh concur that it it was, so I just, I wanna make sure that 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 feedback is given to trustee Nordhook, do you have anything else to add there?
No, oh, it was very clear.
Yes. Uh, member Rissy.
I I'm. And I, initially, I was thinking that this was the clear way to do this, but as I ponder this and I look at it more over the weekend here, I'm. I have some concerns, and I think my my, I think what I, I think we're. Uh, caught up in the weeds, so to speak, my, my biggest concern is that right now. We are changing this uh classification for the area around fifty second street, if you will. But the land to the north and south of forty eighth street. We're not changing the classification on, and so my concern is that we've drawn an artificial line literally in the sand. South of forty eighth street, so if you're in one parcel. You, you can't build a warehouse or an industrial complex or anything, but as soon as you hop literally over the fence. You can do that. It does, it uh, it does not on the west side, it goes around visitors' parcel, but it does not go over the parcel to the north.
It follows, it follows the airport property.
Exactly, and the concern I I guess with this that I have is that. When we originally started talking about this, it was related to the industrial property to the north, which isn't included in this. Where an applicant wanted to, the same property owner, I might add, wanted to build a temporary industrial structure. And we didn't want that, and I realized that that was more of the, because it was a temporary structure, but. After going through this process, I think we would have had a whole bunch of pullback, even if it hadn't been temporary, about it being an industrial structure. In that area, and here we're allowing that, and that's what started this whole conversation, and we're allowing, essentially, we're not. Doing anything to the, to the person that started this whole conversation, if you will. We're just uh, we're just drawing the lines around them, and I kind of feel like the lines. Should go, I guess, I I feel the line should go a little more into the north and a little more to the west, I think there should be more of a geographical boundary. And not just a line drawn between two parcels of 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 land. You know, maybe it's a street, maybe it's, maybe it gets drawn all the way up to forty eighth street, I just, I don't, I I. I think we're setting ourselves up here for a problem down the road, similar to the one we're trying to correct right now. We're just, we're just looking at. A small concern and not the broader picture.
That's why it's here, then if we wanna draw the map to go up further north.
Is it not zoned, that 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 was my understanding.
That parcel is zoned AC two.
It it, right, so.
But it doesn't matter what it's zoned, we have land here to the north that's on industrial, this is the future land use map, which guides development in our township. So if we wanna stay that land that's already zoned industrial, we don't want it to really be industrial, we want it to be agricultural. We can put that in the math, in the in the future land use map, that doesn't change the zoning of it.
Okay, right, I mean, it's not rezoning a property so that property would stay AC two or industrially. But that if someone applies for an industrial site plan on industrial zone parcel, I think you have issues not approving that, though.
I agree, Brian, but if somebody wants to build on a agricultural property. And change it and change the zoning to industrial and its future land use is industrial, that usually isn't a problem, right?
Let's, yeah, that's why we.
Okay, but, but if you changed it to agricultural. That's a, that's a problem, you can't go from industrial to something that typically, that's future land used. Agricultural.
You mean for a rezoning?
Right.
If that's what the master plan is indicating.
Right, so what I'm saying is if the neighboring properties were future land used agricultural. It it, I think it. It guides development in a little different manner than what we're trying, than what we're uh doing here. I think if if even if it's, even if it's already zoned AC two, it it. I just, yeah, maybe I'm wrong on this, but I think it, I think um even from a legal argument, I think it looks better to include. That whole area and and not just draw the lines around certain people.
I was gonna say, one note, in the two thousand eight Futurany is playing the airport was just white, it was just blank, it was just referred to as airport property. So didn't have this extra industrial part added to it. You know, more with the understanding that if, you know, they're putting hangers aeronautical uses that would go there, it's not gonna be an agricultural use. They might have aeronautical uses, and there's not a future land use designation for that. But if I'm not mistaken, if we fut- future land use the current zoned industrial to agricultural. There's nothing that would preclude anybody because the zoning designation is industrial from building industrial, is that correct?
Correct, they could sense it.
That's the issue with what we're talking about, I think we would have to rezone it, Scott, to ag. And then it would.
To stop somebody from building industrial, you're right, you're absolutely right, I, but what I'm, what I'm saying is. Well, I'm I'm.
Is this what you're talking about right here, is this area up here that's that's now zoned industrial? And this is AC two, and this is industrial.
Yeah, and if if the, if the intent here is as a township, we don't want to see. Industrial development on the east side of the airport, then why are we leaving industrial property in the future land use plan? I understand that it's already zoned that, I'm not trying to change the zoning, I'm, I'm saying, just, just like if you have agricultural land. On the west side of the airport that you want to see turn to industrial development, you change your plan to show what you want. You don't leave the plan the opposite of what you're trying to guide towards, that's all I'm.
If I said, I I think you would do that with the intent that perhaps a farmer would come along and say, I like that industrial land, I'd like it, I'd like to put a farm there.
Sure, I think the likelihood of that happening is slim, but yes, that's why you would do that, you're absolutely right.
And and then they would come before us, and since it's future land used ag, we'd say, of course, you can put a farm there. I I I concur, this is a hypothetical world.
But that, you do that anyways.
Yes, member Bruno. So so that we're all kind of on the same page, would you mind going to the podium and pointing to what you're talking about? So are you?
Well, I could probably do it, which, which screen can we share here, Brian? Are we able to?
I I think, but my guess is the. The last page, not the next to last, but I think the second to the last has better shading, I think. If you caught that or not. It's page forty three in the packet that we were looking at. Four, three.
Yeah, I'm looking at four three, I think you're looking at four two.
Assuming we're talking about area south of forty.
Okay, so the yellow is the arc, this red area is the AC two. And then this shaded area up here is uh industrial, right? And so the area that's outlined in black is the area that he's proposing we change. To be masked to currently be future land use plan as art. Which is exactly what it is as it sits today, all I'm saying is. If we don't wanna have a warehouse right here, why would we say we wanna, we would consider one here or here? Why don't we just paint that whole area as art? What is the reason to not do that? I understand it's because it's already zoned industrial, but again, it's a future land use map.
Could we make it AC sub two, and then this subcommittee is, there it is, the subcommittee plans to do that.
The subcommittee is working on that, but. The problem is that you have AC two in lots of areas, not just right there, and so it's.
Wait, no. If all goes the way it's looking, that is the only section of AC.
No, there's AC two at the south end of the airport too, I believe, is there not?
Not with the new one, it was just the overlay or.
The AC one, okay. So so I have a question.
Yeah, I I I just, I wanna finish this, we say.
So what you said is correct.
So we could just take all of the gray and make it pink, and call it AC two, and then your subcommittee. Could go and 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 put the restrictions on.
Most of it's already written, she just would have to change a couple.
Well, it's it's not though, because it allows, there's a, there's a a quarter of the industrial uses that allows, yeah, it it's. There's a lot of different things that it allows.
It will, that's what I'm saying, but it would have some restrictions versus regular industrial.
Right, I guess I'm just saying if we're gonna, I I don't know, I I feel we're targeting, we're, I feel we're doing a a targeted. Selection here, and that's what disturbs me, and I'd like to see it more broad, so we're not focused on. Just a a handful of property owners.
Remember Roland.
So if, and I understand what Scott's saying, and but my question would be doing that. What's the advantage, it doesn't stop anybody from coming in and saying, hey, I wanna. Do a warehouse here, it's already zoned for industrial, I I get what you're saying, but I mean, what what's the? What's the advantage of it?
Right, the only thing I could mention with the AC overlay on it would give us more of a buffer zoning. From a straight industrial to ag, the idea of the AC did have more restrictions than a normal industrial. So then it would treat it more like a buffer zone between the industrial that's further down thirty sixth street. Over to that side to the ad.
Right.
That's.
Member Rich, yeah, member Richardson and the member Bruno.
Um, well, it's not currently zoned as industrial though, correct?
We're talking about this gray.
The area to the north is.
Yes, it is, yeah.
It's zoned industrial, it's not the.
Some of it is, not all of it, some of it.
That's what gray, the gray is.
If if I may, I I think this might address this question.
Yeah, go go ahead, member Bruno.
I I, I think, for me, I'm I'm trying to take a step back and decompose, what is the task at hand? I thought we were doing what I'd call a progressive elaboration on this, I thought the task at hand in this step. Was to take land that's currently agricultural and make sure its future use matched.
It is.
If that is the task, then I think this addresses it, if the task is bigger than that, then I think this all opens up, this discussion's relevant. But I thought we were doing step one, and if that's step one as defined, then I think we've achieved it.
So that that is, well, step one is, would you like to make a motion?
I would, but this is my first time doing it, so how do I formally make the motion?
I'd like to make a motion to approve the. I'd like to make a motion to approve the uh, the change to the.
Future land as noted.
Yes.
I would like to make a motion to approve the master plan as noted, to make. The currently zoned agricultural area to future use agricultural so that they match.
All right, I hear a motion.
Just uh, just a clarification right there, we're recommending this to the township.
Yes, making a motion to recommend this to the township by member Bruno and supported by member Corson, you both good with that?
Yeah.
Okay, all those in favor?
As a matter of discussion here, so the areas that are currently arc that are changing to industrial. That, are you, are you saying that that is staying arc in your motion?
Well, I.
Or are you staying?
I think you just said, I'm not doing anything with with industrial right now.
So you're not following these lines?
No, I am.
Yes.
These lines are currently wrapped around.
If you look at them.
Agricultural.
If you look at the map. To the west of M six where intersects with ninety six, there is a track of land there that is arc. And it changes to industrial in the, in the drawing, again, further to my point of.
All right, ma'am, would you please go to the point, I don't see that, I would, I would respectfully disagree, but if you could show it to me.
Yeah.
I I think I.
Scott, I'm so sorry, but we we have, we have a motion on the table, we need to vote on this.
Twice that we've done this.
Yeah.
For clarification, because he said he wanted to keep the arc areas.
We. Then people can vote it down, we 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 have a motion on the table to approve what Brian did, so I I'd like to, Brian, if you can call the roll to to go through this.
Can we add something with that?
Now that I, now that, um, yeah. I'm sorry, member Angle has pointed out what member Reese is talking about, can I rescind my motion? I would like, I'd like to withdraw, I I would like to see him explain this, cuz I I I see what he's saying.
That's fine, and and I I'm just trying to get to a point of order when we're, when we're in a motion like.
Yeah, sorry.
I agree, cuz that's, this has happened multiple times, that we can't have a motion on the table and then start having all this discussion.
Yeah.
That was just my point.
Okay, so the the motion has been rescinded, let's, let's go through this, go ahead, Scott.
Okay, all I was trying to get clarification on is he said in the motion, he wanted to keep arc areas as arc. And my concern is that above this outlined area, there is a small sliver of arc. That is, and actually, if I go to the thing, I could probably point it out.
Is it the golf course, Scott?
Uh, yeah, I believe it is, so it would be this area right. Where do I go here?
It's not.
Oh, that's still broken. Okay, well, it's it's the, it's labeled art right next to M six and ninety six where they come together.
Was that intentionally changed, Brian?
We had an.
No, the golf course looks like it was.
It's on the overhead, you just moved it off of it, you gotta look at the screen up there.
So, correct me, I'm gonna make a recital, what I think you're saying.
Yeah.
Thank you for this point, so right now, this is drawn as is, I'm going on this boundary.
Right.
I thought it was catching all the current art, current zoning.
Right.
To make it future use art, I believe this Reese is pointing out, we've missed this little tiny.
We, if we go with your initial, with your original motion, we're changing that to industrial. Or no, no, I, well, I, I'm sorry. Right.
That's sliver.
So, right.
So so we are, the nest, the the net we cast, this this little peninsula, is that what you're saying?
Exactly, that's what I was asking for clarification on, is are we following the map or or the boundary, or are we following? The current zoning, because the way you worded it, it sounded like you were following the zoning, but I think everybody thought you were following the map.
May I make a motion?
Do you wanna get clarification from Brian on what his intention was before?
I was really just following the railroad there as a little bit of a natural buffer, cuz that portion up there. I think is attached to kind of waste water treatment parcel, so I think that's the only reason I I stopped the border where it was.
Right, cuz that is not anything that. Nothing can happen, that, it's already what it is.
Sorry, so.
That's the only reason I drew with that.
I just wanted to make sure that clarify, that clarification existed.
Good.
You'd like.
The other one, I lost track. Right.
Go up, Mr. Member Bruno, if you'd like to make a motion.
Okay, I would like to re reinitiate, I'd like to make a motion to approve the future use map. As drawn to preserve our currently zoned arc to future use arc.
Can I hear, I hear support? Support by member Corson, member uh, Bruno made the motion, every court just supported it, can you roll call this one, Brian?
Yep. Remember Nordhook?
Yes.
Remember Richardson?
Yes.
Remember Corstens?
Yes.
Remember Moxley?
Yes.
Remember Nordeig?
Yes.
Remember Angle?
Yes.
Remember Reese?
No.
Remember Bruno?
Yes.
Remember Roland?
Yes. Motion passes, thank you. So. Do we want to, Scott, look at rezoning that? Is that something the subcommittee could recommend and we could do that?
I, I don't know, at this point, we've gone so many different directions with this thing, I, my. It's, we've spent six months working on this and a heck of a lot of time, uh, several of us have, and I'm. I'm not sure which way to go here, I I.
Part of me wonders to, just sorry to interrupt, but I feel like potentially, we could give Brian. Potentially, we could give Brian some direction to. Legal counsel about it, I feel like, I feel like originally. The, whatever, the second proposal that we all talked about, the one that was the blended. Talked about an overlay over the future land use, I feel like that overlay could extend to that industrial area. Only, I guess. And it would cover, we talked so much about the wording back and forth with underlying zoning. What it would limit, I think that Brian could work with legal counsel to get that. Section put into an overlay that could come back to all of us to look at, not just the subcommittee. That's my feeling.
You're talking about the sliver now, right?
Um, I'm talking about that industrial.
Talking about everything to the.
Are you talking about all of that, okay.
And we would have to give Brian direction on how far. East we would want that, if it ends at Thornapple River Drive, like thirty six and Thornapple River Drive to the north. Much we would want him to do.
That's kind of what we've been discussing in the committee. But I also, I, my concern is the, the. The line down south of forty eight street, I I think that the arc, that this, this. I I think the the future land you should have gone to forty eight street, so there was a hard line at forty eight street, I don't like that it, that it. Comes over that road, I think that, that uh. Maybe creates. Some wavering uh, thoughts on this, and in the future uh, to a developer even across the road or just to the south of it. I think that down the road, it makes it easier for somebody to come in and have that line shifted further south. And and so I I thought by putting a hard line to the north and that AC two area, it, it uh. It gets it a little farther away, it's a little harder sell in ten years, twenty years down the road, if the property owner in fifty second wants to get it to jump one parcel south. It's, it's a bigger challenge.
I think. I think if anybody looks at it, there's a difference between AC zoning and industrial. And so if you, what you're saying is that future, somebody could say in it, there's this AC zoning, there's arc, and I wanna throw some industrial right in between that. To me, any planning commission should look at that and say, that's not, we need a buffer, that you can just throw that in.
Well, but the AC zone allows those, a lot of those similar industrial uses, so I think that's going to be the argument that somebody will use down the road.
Think that anybody that would look at this as a planning mindset would think, no, we need a buffer in between right now. That AC zoning is that buffer. And would not allow it to jump from an AC to an industrial of any type and then to an ad. I think that that is, i- if you're looking at planning and. Wrong, but that, to me, it would be.
I don't view the, I don't view the airport as a buffer, I view roads as a buffer or a park or, you know. More more of it, you know, I just, I feel like the airport is not the buffer, they're the part of the problem. I don't mean that in a negative, uh, you know, comment towards the airport, just. Yeah.
So you're saying that by drawing it through the middle of a field, it looks more arbitrary than it would if we were following forty eight.
Absolutely, and I, I think we should have followed the road, not, not the middle of a, of a, a field.
I'm suggesting we can, we just need to rezone it.
Yeah, well, or we just change the motion down the future land use part of the road.
It's not.
That zoning underlying is, it goes back to the industrial and the other part.
Right, where I, that, that's what I'm saying, like, it's moot unless we rezone it, and it is industrial today.
I have. I I think you're looking at it from a different perspective.
Um, I have several questions about this, and I'm sorry that I'm so ignorant about a lot of the questions I'm about to ask. Um, and maybe we can answer this. Later and maybe not. Today. But I don't understand necessarily like. The influence we have over changing. The AC sub, like, is that, to me, I thought that that was separate from. The other zones where the airport has. More control over that, and we, and we can't, we have limited ability to do.
That that's the case for AC one where there's aircraft operations, where there are no.
So AC sub two, we do have more influence.
Because it's not considered uh, aircraft operations.
Thank you, and then. All of the gray that I see on the map, that's to the north. Uh, I'm not referring to the part down in the southwest, all the gray at the north. Um, that's. Future land use, that actual zone.
And that's why I'm saying, we we should rezone it, if that's our.
Yes.
And then my next question is, I have two more questions, one more. Um, I'm a little, this is all new to me still, so I'm a little confused as to why we do this. Why not just zoning, like, why is there a future land use? Thing to sort of confuse the matter.
I wanna let Brian answer that.
That's what you use to guide for rezoning, so you use that as part of a master plan, you do lots of public input and engagement, and you hear what the community wants, and your future land use plan guides. Any rezoning requests that you receive, so that's really the planning document is your future land use plan.
It's a statutory requirement.
And yes, that as well, too.
I see, so, I mean, I, we talked about this before a bunch of times, in my opinion. AC sub two should turn yellow, all the gray to the north should turn. At least not gray anymore, I I mean, I think. I don't have anything else to say after this last point, no industrial east of craft. Whatever we have to do to make that happen.
Alright, thank you, remember we're not.
And two parts, in that same kind of um, vein of education. So arc obviously is an acronym for agricultural and an acronym, abbreviation, so so AC.
It's a cascade then.
Oh, arc is just cascade? But I can, I I can derive that from agriculture, all the letters are in agriculture, so I I can solve it. What, what's AC stand for AC two?
Airport Commerce Zoning District.
Arc or Rural Conservation.
Yep.
Okay, so arc is agricultural rural conservation and AC is airport commerce. Thank you, alright, so that was my first question, my second question is more of an answer. Or in, in a, in a thank you, I guess, to the committee. Um, or to the, to board, so I actually went to the training last Thursday in Frankenmuth for the entire day. And to answer Mr. Richardson's question. As I understand it, our zoning is worthless if you don't have a master plan, as Mr. Commissioner, member Angle said. The zoning must be based by statute on a master plan, and if you don't have a master plan. Then all the other pieces are kind of invalidated, which was kind of an eye opener to me for me, and I'm not a lawyer, so I'm probably not capturing that in the exact essence. But that's why there's two, because without a master plan, you don't have the foundation to build everything else off of.
Thank you.
Member Reese.
Brian. If somebody comes in. And there's a property that's zoned something, let's say it's owned industrial, and they wanna do a P U D. To build something on that property. And the land, the future land use map says something other than what the current zoning is. That's a, that, that is not as much of a shoe in as it typically would be, am I right?
What are, they're trying to?
Industrial, are they trying to build houses?
Something that complies with the current zoning.
Right. If something complies with the current zoning, but the future land use plan is in conflict of the current zoning. Does that alter how the P U D is looked at?
We, that is one of the things we look at is, you know, is this in conjunction with the. Master plan, yep, so that's one item we look at.
So, if, if I was trying to build a housing development. Uh, of an apartment building, let's say, in an area that's currently zoned arc. Right, which is not high density residential of any kind. And I, and there was a, in a P U D or something, that's gonna be looked at, and that's probably going to have an effect on my. Uh, number of units per acre, so to speak, am I wrong to say that?
No.
Okay. So, that's what I was getting at with the AC two, is that if somebody comes in with a plan to develop that area, and it's future land used. Something that is a, a, a different use, this committee has a little bit more leverage. To water down the application. If it's, if it, depending on how it's future land use is. But. Yeah.
I do have one more clarification question, just for myself, and I'm sorry about this.
Don't be sorry.
So you said, you said that the zoning is built on the foundation of the future land use, like we. The future land use is the basis for what the zoning law becomes.
It's the guide, it's really the guy that.
So then when we have a situation where. Future land use conflicts with. The current actual zone. I mean, zoning holds more weight than future land use. Way more weight, right, I mean, future land use isn't actually law yet, the zoning is the law, correct?
Correct, yes.
Okay, thank you. I'm just trying to. Fully understand this.
Future land use just guides development, really.
Okay, so I think what you're pointing out, which I struggled with too, so it's a bit of an oxymoron, so yes. As I presented it, I did present the oxymoron, and that was actually a question I asked, and they said, yes, so it's. It's required by statute, but I guess it doesn't, the statute doesn't say it, it has to be logical.
We call that a circular reference and uh.
Well, I personally, like I said, would like to make as much of this not industrial. Future land use or zoning. Whatever we have to do to make that happen. I hope we can figure out how to make that happen.
Alright, at, at the risk of may I ask a question on his question? So at the risk of, as long as reasonable, we'll, we'll make this the educational session, so if we're, if, if we have this airport commerce too. That we say can be um. Controlled differently than the industrial. Right now, we have flexibility, I'm gonna pick, to me, the outlier, so it had a bunch of stuff in there, but one was like a hotel, that, that's just, that's not in the. In the uh, um, statistical population. We have the ability to exclude things like that, just picking out hotel for the sake of it.
And we, that is part of the language.
Okay, okay.
It's a bit of a process to change the zoning, but yes.
But that's, but that was step two that we're working on, correct, so we could address all of, we could address a fair amount of Mr. Richardson's concerns. With this AC two and maybe just changing the shape of the overlay.
Can, can I speak to that a second? Because y- you're correct in that, the problem comes in that if you're, cuz I, I think what I'm hearing here from the planning commission. Is that they wanna see us change AC two to limit those uses. And take most of the industrial uses that are in AC two, if not all of them out, so that it would be more like arc. Which is great, the problem is that the overlay was also designed to encompass the industrial zoning to the north. Well, it's easy, easier to amend the zoning for AC sub two. Because that's the only spot that exists in the township, or 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 perhaps will, if our recommendations go through, then. The, the problem is that you can't use the same. Overlay. There as you would for the industrial, because they're two different. They're two very different areas and two very different zonings, so the, so the, so the, it's.
I think we can, Brian, am I wrong?
I thought that's why it's an overlay. Well, the overlay was, the overlay wasn't.
He's got a newborn at home.
Not to call you out. But my understanding was that when we originally talked about making the overlay, it did encompass a lot more, and it. Is, it does address underlying zoning.
It, yeah, you can write it.
For that industrial, the way it's worded now, it is worded to kind of encompass all of that and hopefully limits some of the uses.
Right, it probably takes a little more work to massage it, but you can take out uses and uses, things like.
What, what I'm getting at is that. The way the overlay was designed, current, the current version that we're, we're working on included uses in AC two. That I'm hearing people don't wanna see, but that our uses that may be in included in the industrial area to the north. And if you're going to say that you can't do any industrial uses to the north, then why do you have your future land use plan labeling that area industrial?
Let me, let me ask Brian one more question. What? Hypothetically, if we decided to include all the way up, let's say. I think we have to, this is my opinion, I know you talked about craft, going all the way to craft. I think we need to give the airport opportunity at thirty sixth street to make an entrance into the airport.
Correct.
I thi- I think we all agree that we don't want them to use forty eight street, and I think when we're looking at this truthfully, what's gonna happen in the future. The airport's going to put another entrance in. And when we looked at it as a subcommittee, we're trying to help guide them to the most appropriate. Entrance into the airport to make it plausible in the future without limiting that. But limiting other places.
Right.
So that, when we talk about all the way to thirty sixth street, my question would be. What, what does it matter, what would it change if we did make the future land use, if we amended our? Proposal, or our recommendation to include at least up to thirty sixth street, that section of industrial, is that what you're saying?
Actually, I would go to, we're throwing up over drive and ninety six intersect.
That's what I was trying, I said.
And and we're thirty sixth street, that intersection of, I think that's what you meant, but I wanted, because that allows the airport the flexibility. To do what they want with the interchange.
Done in the future, it's currently used. Zoned industrial. Future happens and somebody comes in wanting, your example, a P U D. It would be looked at saying, well, the future land use for this is arc, this does not fit into our future plan. We would not. Recommend that, if that was the case, is that correct?
Yeah, yeah, give you a little more.
So I would propose. Amending our. Recommendation to include. The future land use of arc. All the way up. To include that gray industrial at the corner, all the way to the corner of Thornapple River Drive and thirty sixth street. That would be my. I'm putting that out there. To amend.
And, and would you include the AC two?
Yeah, that was my question, would you include the AC two?
Knowing what I know, the airport owns that land.
They own all that land, they own the industrial too.
But I just.
Most of it, not all of it.
Brian, what? What benefit would it be to change, we're already working on changing that zoning to limit it. I don't see a reason to include that in the future land use. Arc.
I don't see a reason not to.
I'd rather revert back to the oh eight one where it's just blank and listed as airport property than have it be arc, because. It's expected they might have airplane hangars and things like that, which.
In my opinion, is that section, we know.
But see, the overlay would cover the airport uses there.
Again, this is why I think this whole conversation really overlaps with. The subcommittee's conversation, it's very.
That's a question.
I don't know, I I I guess, I do project management for a living, and I I would call this scope creep. Um, I, I, I go back to the task at hand, the task at hand was to make sure that what is arc. Remains arc. I don't have enough information personally to, I would, I would say no to everything that was just. You know, kind of tossed around, because there's currently a, a facility in this area, isn't there, right before I go over the, the bridge by the FedEx. There's some sort of industrial going on there, it's, I don't know if it's a cement processing plant or what.
That is a separate privately owned company.
But that's the area we're talking about.
That is in this area.
Yeah, so how would that impact, there, there's, there's a bunch of collateral damage, I'm not sure I understand, so. So, so we have a nonconforming, and we'd have a zone that doesn't match future, it just seems like. We wanna do this, it seems like maybe a step two we look at, could we, it it has to go before the township board anyway, so if we're gonna rezone, we can also. Update the future use map at the same time and. Address. And do it cleanly, I I guess I'm for clean, if we can go back and do this clean, why would we do it muddy?
Member Roland had a question. It could be. Argued. Resident lawyer in the group. Uh, it could be argued that future land use could say, listen, future land uses, we're looking at rezoning this back to agricultural. You know, that's where we're going, that's the future land use, is we're, we're rezoning this AC two back. To agricultural. Which. I mean, I. I think we should do that. I mean, I really think we should. And that was my, I mean, I considered voting no on the amendment, because I wanted to grab some of this other stuff, and like Scott said. Push the industrial back a little bit too, but. You know, I figured we could maybe round to that. But I, 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 I think we need to do that.
Member Richardson.
Uh, two quick points, I don't disagree with what you said, I do, however, think. If, if it can't go to craft, it needs to at least go to that thirty sixth street off ramp. Not all the way to Thornapple, to me Thornapple is residential, and. Letting industrial. Stop and start there is too close, like, at least the thirty sixth street off ramp, which will apparently be the new entrance, and that leads me to my second question. You can have an entrance to an airport without having a bunch of new warehouses, right?
Right, but, and I don't think it's warehouses, I think, I think when you're realistically looking long term. Right, but, and I don't think it's warehouses. I think, I think when you're realistically looking long term. Planning and you're looking at a, the second largest airport in the state of Michigan and you're looking at putting an off ramp. Exit or entrance from thirty six street straight into the airport, there's gonna be gas stations. There, there are rental car facilities within that airport and the last thing you do before you return rental cars, you fill up your tank. And so that's why we're looking at that section that if, if we're looking realistic, what's gonna happen in the future? Where do you want that hard edge to be? Because they need an extra and it's the second largest airport.
Okay, but, but, but I, 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 I guess I'm starting to take issue with the, the free reign of it's, it's preordained. There's gonna be an entrance to the airport there. I. I personally, I guess, I'm not gonna voice my support or lack of support, but I don't think anything's preordained. Um, I don't think as the second airport, it necessarily needs, by my math, there's currently three entrances. I don't understand. I. I, I take issue with the preordained, I take issue with the word need. I think it's a want at this point. I haven't seen anything that supports need. So I don't know if those are terms I want to use. It's like, you want to call round hill, round hill. I'm not sure.
Okay, you, it's different. That's your opinion. This is my opinion and I'm not. Take away all my extreme words. I apologize for saying that. If you have been a part of any of the airport planning sessions in their airport access studies. They want another entrance.
Yeah, and I.
I, I agree with that. They want another, I don't disagree with that at all. Very well said.
And I oppose, I oppose an entrance at thirty six.
We've had a lot of discussion. Would somebody like to make a motion? We already had one.
I was talking about. To include the industrial up to thirty six street.
Are you making that?
I would like to see, it could, could, do you have a piece of paper, Brian, that you could just draw and put up for all of us what? First of all, what member Corstang's proposal would look like, so we can just take a look at it? And extend that yellow up to and around a long point.
Yeah, I could do it on the screen, but unfortunately it doesn't working.
I'm sorry, I don't have that.
Great technology, that's always.
Once I switch, it doesn't come back.
And you would not, you would, would you follow forty eight street or not? Would, uh, on the south or?
I, I would only because of Brian's comment that it wouldn't change. Even if we overlaid that, it wouldn't change anything because the zoning is already there, the AC zoning. If we wanted to look at changing that zoning. Then we could look at adjusting that, that further, but as of right now. And again, I know our directive from the board was what was ag to keep ag, but I think that. If they understood that that whole section is industrial and we want to switch that up to being future land use. Arc versus industrial, I think they would support that.
So, so, and, and just to clarify, are you saying, uh, take that industrial and zone it to AC two?
Future land use.
Future land use AC two?
No, I would say.
Agriculture. Okay, would you also include?
I don't, I, just from what Brian is saying to us. It does no use to change that pink to future land use.
I disagree. Because if you're the property owner, immediately over the line drawn in the sand. I think you have a very good argument to come in front of a committee here in ten years and say. I want to be able to do an industrial use because there's one right next door.
Brian.
But if the land is.
Your professional opinion.
I mean, this will all be in the minutes and you can. Record the reasoning for it and I think there is difference between the airport uses and. Industrial uses. So I think we could probably address that with whoever we wanna amend the ACs.
I'm not as concerned about the airport uses. I'm concerned about the airport, let's say leasing to a warehouse. Because, and we obviously know they're interested in doing that in other areas that he just shaded. So what's to say they wouldn't do that right there?
What's the down?
That you address that with the AC zoning, whether that's permitted or not.
Wendy, what would be the downside? What's the negative for?
I don't know.
I guess the downside is I don't think it's realistic that that would be an egg. That's never gonna be an egg used there.
That's where my brain is going. Like I look at the future land use, the idea of the future land use map. Is what we want this to be in the future and in my mind, that's AC zoning.
Yes, but right next door, we don't, we don't want anything.
Remember Bruno has a question.
Um, member.
You can, came with a really great guy.
My last name is Bruno, so I'm not, I'm not, I'm living in Glass House, I'm not, I'm gonna make sure I'm pronouncing correctly. Did I capture your intent in my shame? Is this?
It's further than what I was saying. I'm, and, and I'm, if, if other people on, no, no, I'm. Everybody can, everybody else, my feeling was right to the corner of thirty six street and Thornapple River Drive.
I would, I would, I would be in supportive of that, of that northern, uh, point, yes. But I don't like it how he's driven, drawn it to thirty six street. There you go, right there. It came straight down. Oh, hey, look at that. With the exception of the AC two area.
So, um. Jesus, here's the thing though, I mean, if you do this and we bring an exit coming into the airport on thirty six. They're gonna put a gas station right there in that industrial.
Go ahead.
So somebody, I'm, I'm getting myself confused by, I'm gonna tribute to member Corstang, she said the, the, the problem with this would be that. We don't really see someone coming and using agriculture. But what I did find interesting is that it's, what is arc sampling in agricultural?
Rural conservation.
So maybe it's the sea in arc. Could this be a conservation district?
Okay, sporting fields. Do we, do you want? Wendy, do you want to amend your, amend the motion to?
I, I'll make a.
You have to make a motion to withdraw the original recommendations.
Okay, so I know they, they've, uh, suggested multiple different entrance areas. Did they ever? When I say they, did the airport study ever suggest an entrance in off of? The, uh, craft dead end by the Pepsi Bottling Group? Like, could that be the entrance in rather than off thirty six street highway off ramp? It's, you know. Not that far away from what they did propose, at least now on the map, it doesn't look very far away. And it already, the street already goes basically. Right up into the airport there. If you look at where Pepsi Bottling Group building is. Did they mention, was that ever a proposal?
So that, that was never a proposal nor was, and I'm sorry, a little bit out of order, but I ask these questions. Um, so that was never in their study. I don't know why, it just was not in their study. I also asked them why, if you look at Patterson, a five lane super highway with fifty five mile an hour speed limits. If you look at the north end of it, it actually almost touches the expressway. Like, wouldn't that be, they did not study that either. I know that's not the topic at hand, but answering your question.
They've made it pretty clear. They want direct access from the highway and without going down county roads. And so if they went down thirty six street and then through craft, you're going through another intersection with a traffic light. They would like a direct route so that they don't have to deal with putting more traffic on secondary streets.
Was one of the options over, over by M six and sixtieth, north of Davenport. Just east of.
That was on there. Oh, yeah. They had several different options, but I think we're getting out on the weeds here because we're not planning airport access.
Yeah, sorry. I just had a few questions about that, but I am done. Thank you.
I, I think you're right. I think we need to withdraw the motion, uh, and vote on that and then resubmit the motion.
Right, so.
I'll make a motion that we withdraw the previous motion.
I'll support it.
Okay, uh, it's been made by member Angle, supported by member Rissy that we withdraw the previous motion. Um, because we did a roll call, we should do that again to withdraw it, if you don't mind, Brian.
So this is to Thornapple.
With drawing the recommendation.
Yeah, and then we'll put a new recommendation in.
Do you want it a roll call?
Yeah.
Member Nordhook?
Yes.
Number Richardson?
Yes.
Number Corstage?
Yes.
Number Moxley?
Yes.
Number Norde?
Yes.
Number Angle?
Yes.
Number Reese?
Yes.
Number Bruno?
No.
Number Roland?
Yes. Okay, and now.
Make a motion. For a recommendation to the board. Do change the future land use map. To.
As drawn, as, as drawn to also include the area.
Yes, as drawn to also include the industrial area north. Of thirty or of Thornapple River Drive.
You want to reference?
Reference the map as, as hashed.
Yeah, exhibit A, can I call it?
Yeah.
Both, both hashes though, I'm still confused. Single hatch. And why not the both hatches?
I'd like to.
You said, you said it was more than you thought, but what's wrong with it?
What I'm proposing.
Okay, so.
Up to there as to all of that to be future land use arc.
Can I ask a question?
Yes. Sure.
And are you leaving the AC two alone?
I am, as of right now, I think that once we come back with those.
Okay, we have a motion.
Hold on, can I ask a question? Can we push it to craft?
That's not a clarifying question.
No, because there's already industrial.
Did you mean craft or did you mean the thirty six street exit is drawn?
She means the thirty six street exit is drawn. Okay, so I have a mo, we have a motion from every question, enjoy your support. Support, support. Okay, we have support, remember Moxley, let's do the roll call again, Brian.
Member Nordhook?
Yes.
Member Richardson?
It's the, the best of two evils.
I mean, can I add a comment to this? I mean, it's better than what we have currently.
Is that supporter or is that a?
It's a reluctant support, yeah.
Alright, support, go ahead, member.
I'm sorry.
Remember Corstage?
Yes.
Remember Moxley?
Definitely, yes.
Remember Nordike?
Yes.
Remember Angle?
No.
Remember Reese?
No.
Remember Bruno?
No.
Remember Roland?
No. Way to go, Rob. Shut it down.
Member Pat.
Um, I was looking at it more of, uh, this could be step one and then we can make it better later.
That's okay. Well, that I think that once we come back with the AC information, that if we want to extend out our recommendation to include more. Arc at that point in the future land use we can.
To me, any gray that disappears, I have to vote yes.
Alright, I have, I have a question. Since, since we reopened discussion and rescinded my motion. I just want to understand why, why we would want, once, I mean, if you've been at the intersection of Thornapple with thirty six. I don't understand why did the east of it is fine to the west of it isn't. Wouldn't we, wouldn't we better to go to the, a, a more definitive boundary, the double hash? It seems very arbitrary and if you look at the land there, to the west, that little spot there. We'd want a gas station on the west.
No, you were right on Thornapple River Drive.
If I, if, if I could give a contra, I just, I, I, I don't have a strong opinion one way or the other on this, believe it or not, um. But there is a buffer, well, if you, if you were on Thornapple to turn right on the thirty six street to head towards the expressway. There is a buffer where there's no residential, so if there was a gas station there, I could, I could live with it.
It would be quite a ways down too. I mean, I could go to a map.
It, 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 there's no, there, there's an expressway that kind of blocks the residential, right? So that in my head is where it was, where I, I guess there is on the other side too, but there's also a park there that I don't like that it intersects with, yeah.
Yeah, I, I kind of get that if you're coming from, from the west, but if you're. If you're creating all that traffic over that bridge at Thornapple coming out of thirty six, that bridge can't support the traffic it has. I don't know, I, I, that's just my concern is, is that intersection. And we're addressing half the side of it, but.
Yeah, no, I hear you.
The intersection with the highway is over a half mile down the road. From Thornapple River Drive, there's, there's a half mile up there.
But you're coming over Thornapple River, you're coming over the bridge right there. And immediately to the right, if there's a gas station there, I'm saying that bridge can't support it.
Yeah, I don't think there would be a gas station right there because there isn't land there. It's, it's going to be, if there is one, it would more than likely be.
Okay, perfect.
That, that's actually, remember now, that's really important.
That property Mda owns, that's why they had access in and out of that, Brian.
Can you, can you explain that?
What property that you're talking about?
I, I'm sorry, that is not accurate. M, Mda does not own, the county of Kent owns all that land.
Is it?
All the land to the west of Thornapple River Drive on both sides of thirty six street is owned by Kent County.
All the way till when?
All the way till there's, uh, basically, uh, to the bottling group really, so hold on, I'll give you a measurement. It stops, it stops twelve hundred and sixty feet from craft.
Okay, so any, the county owns.
Approximately.
The county.
But I need definition of it, the double hash?
The double hash.
Is owned by the county.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, I'm gonna move us along unless anybody else. Well, just, I guess I can ask, Brad, when's this gonna be presented to township board next meeting? Okay, when is that meeting?
It'd be the.
Okay, this Wednesday?
No, not this Wednesday, it's not on the agenda.
Next Wednesday?
No, a couple of weeks after that.
Okay. Alright.
Uh, member Max. April twelve, I think.
April twelve, okay, thank you.
Uh, Brian is, uh, this Casey Rice still coming to the meeting?
Office response from him, so I don't know.
No response.
I got an out of office response, so he's on, he was not in the office when I emailed him.
Alright, uh, moving on, uh, to article nine, any old business.
Oh, I have some.
Yes.
I just want to know, it's kind of fallen off the. Are we not getting that from the manager? Like what's?
That's a great question.
I feel like we talked about this forever. It was supposed to be presented, 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 and now here it is. Almost April and we still haven't even heard a word about it.
And we didn't get it last year either.
Correct, this is the second year in a row.
Can I make a comment about that?
Can we, I, I want to hear what Brian has to say, absolutely.
Yeah, I'll ask him again for.
Okay. Go ahead with your comments, Scott.
So I sat through a recent meeting and ate a township and they had their CIP. And I was, I was really, um, impressed with ours because theirs is. Way more vague, I think, and the way it's presented is not nearly as well put together as ours with the colorful slides. We have it, but when we, but when we do see it, it is certainly a much, uh. Longer and more boring presentation than what they have. There's this kind of more of an honorable mention. Here it is, it flashes across the screen. And ours is, is a very long presentation, and so I really appreciated the time that's put into ours. But I would appreciate seeing it as well.
Yeah, let's, let's ask and I can send in, i- i- if you don't hear back, let me know and I'll send a note, copy the supervisor. I think you have some time coming up to review certain things like this, right?
Can I, can I ask a question? Although I did that, I thought. The capital improvement plan was basically kind of our expenditures for the year. How have we not had one for two years? How do, how does that work?
It hasn't been presented to us.
Has not been presented.
It might be one, but.
I, did it get, was it presented to you, Timmy, at the board level ever last year?
No, they didn't, they didn't do one because of the strategic plan process. That's what I was told, it was not being done because of that.
So I know that we're not having any expenditures this year?
It's a, it's not a defined. So it just hasn't been reviewed in two years.
No, the, but it's different than the budget being approved. I want to be clear about that. So this is more future, like, okay, four or five years, um. But I know that the board asked him to add thing, I'm not trying to give him excuses, it should be here. But I know that the board asked him to add things and that was what I was told the reason that he was holding off on it, so. Um, but those, I mean, those, yeah, those should have been added, kind of like a hotel thing, but that's another conversation, so. Okay, any other business? Yes, member Maxley.
At our last meeting, uh, the suggestion was made that we changed the title of the roundhill study to something other than roundhill. And, uh. You were going to, Brian, you were gonna talk to the attorney about the possibility of. Changing something like that to a personal name, that that might be a problem.
Yeah, the attorney did have some concerns with that, naming it after like a specific person and how that opens up the township for risk. He didn't see and it wasn't a legal issue, just changing the name of the committee, but he did have some concerns depending on what. We changed it to. So if we just named the whole committee, the Process Implementation Review Committee, he didn't see an issue with that, for example.
But the Juicy?
He had some concerns with that.
Yeah, the don't do this.
So if we wanted to change the name of that committee, would a simple motion do that?
I believe so, as we created it with a motion. So I mean, it's a planning commission committee, so we can in theory rename. Rename it. I'm not exactly sure. I don't know, you know, if we have to go and redact the name on all the agendas and minutes or if we're just simply changing the name on, you know, the website of how it's.
So I could make a a motion to change the name of the roundhill subcommittee to the process implementation, implementation. Subcommittee on all future documents related to it and on the listing on the website? Yes, I believe so.
I would support that motion. Alright, so you made the motion? Because you started with a question, I want to make sure.
I'll make that a, I'll make that a motion.
So moved.
Now that I haven't been told that that I can do that.
Yeah. Love it.
From the legal counsel, not a resident, uh, you know.
And 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 member Angle supports it. All those in favor, say aye. Aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, here we go. Awesome. Any other business?
I have two comments. One, the power line is still down. I'm just gonna keep mentioning that because I don't know where to bring that.
It's a cable TV line, right?
I'm not sure.
On forty eighth street?
Not sure if it's a um.
It's only one way.
Power line or a communication.
Yeah, that would be a charter or I guess that's probably spectrum now, right? Because that's part, because it's such a franchise agreements with different. Providers, I'm pretty sure that is in the franchise agreement with charter, if I'm not mistaken. They just don't have a pole there. It's really what it comes down to. And that happened, I think, when they built M six, they just never. There's some temporary stuff in there, but I don't think they ever firm that up afterwards. So it's been hanging down for years.
Worse, like it's.
It's sagging.
Like lower than the roof of a Ford Explorer, like to the ground, like it just.
Right. Yeah, you can hang on it. It's great for pull ups.
Yeah.
And then I wonder, like, is there like a specific? Uh, reason why we get the packet two business days before the meeting? Is that like the amount of time that we want it to be?
It's better than what it was.
So yeah, I I can answer than Brian can. I mean, it. It, he's waiting for stuff to come in, then it comes to me. And I, we try to be pretty quick. We, he now texts me when he, when I get it in the box and then. It gets sent out, but I I think it it would be hard pressed to get that out any earlier.
Oh, yeah, my goal is always to get it out at noon on Wednesday and obviously I don't hit that every time, but.
And you have the weekend. Yeah.
That was our, our main goal. Originally, we were getting it on Monday morning.
Yeah, we'd get it the day out.
The day of. And so we had requested that point at least to get at the weekend before the weekend, so we could have the weekend to. To review things and go out and do site visits.
Yeah.
For what it's worth, and anecdotally, I've I've been in many boards where having the type of notice we get here would have been a luxury.
Yeah.
So my, my compliments to getting it out on Thursday or whenever you do, so we have a full weekend.
For the weekend, it's wonderful.
Yeah.
I have a similar, but yet different request. Um. If I understand, and and the topic, the topic was, it was our new committee, process improvement flow?
Process implementation committee.
Okay. So similar vein, I'd say the processing of this. It appears that our staff takes digital entities, textual entities, sends them to a printer. Takes those off of the printer and goes over to a scanning machine and then scans them in. Um, that makes highlighting text, annotating text, underlining text. Almost impossible. So. Again, I guess I don't, trying to make this about me, but I hope everyone else would find this of utility. Is there any way we could have these be? I want to use the word rich text, which is technically correct. These be textual rather than images. If you understand PDF creation, we we're, we're essentially marking up pictures.
Well, the majority of this one is that way. So all the minutes and staff report and agenda. Is that so you can search text? It's just the applicant's information that was submitted that we don't always have digital files for has to be scanned in at times.